Try to keep.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and then welcome to the Monday, October 17th, 2016 work session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We're gonna have some discussion on the street cost recovery assessment collection process in the Endris Industrial Park. And there's been questions about this Shane. I know you have put in a lot of work to this. So we're going to just kinda go through and understand this. Craig, thanks for being here tonight. And Craig Atkins with the Watertown Development Company. If you want to come up and sit with Shane up here, I would appreciate it. And we can kinda go from there. And I think, I think folks that Craig has a lot of history on this. I know this is done before most of us were on here. So I'm just gonna open it up for you Shane, if you want to give us an idea of what's going on, why we're talking about this, and what's up.
Okay, thank you Mayor. You wanna put my, put the overhead screen on? Focus.
How far do you wanna do?
That's good. Well, you can pan out just a little bit. There you go. Alright, so a little background. The Endris Industrial Park area began, we began improvement projects in 2009 and finished them in 2011. So there was three, three projects involved. Two of them were street projects and one was a sanitary sewer project. And essentially it picked up, the street was improved north of, of this general vicinity to some extent prior to those projects. And then as of 2009, this road was first extended over to this intersection with 26th Street. And a sanitary sewer projects came across the top of the back of these lots and came down as well. Then the 2011, the project was completed from the intersection of 26th Street all the way over to 29th Street. During that time, the city spent, I don't know how well we'll be able to read these numbers, but, good, thank you. The total projects costs, just over a million dollars at that time. There was a street cost, storm sewer cost, and sanitary sewer cost. There was, for the sanitary sewer portion of the project, the city did get and utilize what was called state revolving loan funds. So that was low interest loan. And then, that was about the time the economy kinda took a little bit of a hit. So the state did offer a 10% forgiveness on principal for a lot of those state revolving loan funds. So if you look at the column here to the far left of this spreadsheet, those principal forgivances were accounted for in the costs of the project that, so those aren't reflected. What we were forgiven for costs are not reflected in the $1 million. Those were deducted out before this project, or before the spreadsheet was prepared. So basically, you take this total project number, and we took the total acreage of the area that was benefited from it. And then we, we created a cost per acre and a cost per square foot. And then, as the properties were sold off, for further use by individual companies, it was presumed that we would be collecting those fees. And, and I think that was done by various methods. We either got, some of them were collected directly through Watertown Development Company. And I believe that one or two of them might have been collected directly through the finance office at the city. So, anything you wanna add to that Craig?
Well, yeah, what I can do, I know that my office has been working with Shane quite a bit on providing some background on some of the previous purchase agreements. What I can do is, I don't, I haven't had a lot of time to look into this myself, but I can give you kinda the history of how we ended up, where we ended up, and kinda how these lots, the purchases of these lots took place. If you look at the lots eight and nine, those first two lots, the road and infrastructure that was in place already, supported those lots without any additional work. So, we just had a base price on those lots. I think it was, at the time, it was around 12,500 an acre for two and a half acres. There was also an easement that ran back, kind of through the back third on the east side of those lots. And so as part of that discussion with the buyers, the city and development company agreed that, you know, we, we could live with a little, little less money on those properties than we might normally get. And so, we looked at it as an opportunity to sell some property that might otherwise be idle. At the time, we didn't even have any consideration in mind about finishing the other road. When those two properties sold, then we started talking about the idea that, you know, if the city would upfront the assessment costs of that row, of those road improvements, put that in your capital improvements budget, that we could probably sell the rest of those properties over a period of time, which is exactly what happened. What we didn't talk about specifically was how the city was going to collect their cost for the infrastructure. And, and this is just recollection. So my recollection is, originally, the city went ahead and put this in its normal budgeting process, decided to go ahead and pay for it in the capital improvements plan. And we really, really, really beyond that, we didn't discuss until we had a first sale, what those land costs were gonna be. We actually sold a couple of those lots while the road was being constructed, and I can't tell you which ones exactly. And at that time, Mayor Williams and the previous city engineer decided that they needed to understand how much the infrastructure cost assessment should be on those properties. And so they came back with this 49 cents a square foot, which you saw in this piece of paper. What I can tell you, and without having an opportunity to go through this particular spreadsheet, is realistically, that cost with all, with all in, the cost of the land, the infrastructure improvements, roads, streets, sewers, for the entire road. So that would be from basically 23rd Street all the way down to 29th, was more than the 50 cents a square foot. The lot sizes, anywhere from two and a half to three and a half acres, made it almost prohibitive to develop those properties in a cost-effective way and turn around and sell them as industrial properties at, you know, 75 to a dollar a square foot, which was what those properties were going for at that time. And so, after we talked to the city a little bit more, encouraged them to move forward with this project, they went ahead and did it. The mayor's office, along with the city engineer, and I think maybe at the time, there would have been a public works committee, agreed that the 50 cents a square foot, or 49 cents a square foot assessment on the infrastructure would be adequate to cover their costs minus things that they were reimbursed for, whether it was through stimulus money, or others, other resource, other sources. Now, every one of those lots is sold a little differently. It's not like a cookie cutter. Some of those assessments were paid upfront. Understand that when we sell those lots on the city's behalf, that's, Watertown Development Company really works as an intermediary. So we sell those properties. So it's a transaction between the buyer, the development company, and the city. The only thing the development company agrees to are whatever the terms are that are agreed to between the city and the buyer. So, you know, as far as how those assessments were collected, or, or when they were paid, we didn't really care from the development company's perspective, because we weren't gonna see any of that money. All we saw was 50% of whatever the base price per acre was, which started at 12.5, and I think is now at, I wanna say 16, 17,000 an acre, somewhere in there. So, the whole idea was, at the time, industrial park property fully developed was selling for around 75 cents a square foot. If we'd have sold this for what all our costs would have been into it, it was gonna be somewhere in that buck 50 a square foot range, which would have basically made this land unsellable and undevelopable. And, so the, the city leaders at the time, and somebody who were out on the council at the time, agreed that that was probably the best method, or best way to, to move forward. This was an incredible gift from the Endris family to begin with. I don't know if you know the history, but this property was basically gifted to the city with the idea that we had to pay 3,000 an acre, that went into a drug fund that was used, used to help, in this case, fund some of the drug dogs that the police department has had. We've sold all the properties out there, except for lots, well, it's, this map isn't exactly similar to what I'm familiar with. Lots 10 and 11, or lot, Lot 11 is the, I think the only lot, or lot, it'd be this C.
There's 11 for sure. And then, a couple of these over along the.
So Lot 11, and then there's one lot over here, this lot C basically, it's been replatted that, that hasn't been sold. So otherwise, you have, and I think that, you know, when you look at the background of that, that was, for the city, that was a kind of a unique thing, because in the past, you'd always required commercial or industrial development projects to pay for the infrastructure upfront. And one of the ideas that we approached you on was the idea that let's put some infrastructure in in some of these cases, knowing that we won't see it, but knowing that shovel-ready sites were important, and we bet that we'll sell some of these properties much quicker. And, you know, the reality is, with the exception of a couple of those lots, we filled that industrial park up in about four years. So, like I said, I don't have a lot of the detail. I know Michelle, my office, has provided Shane with all the purchase agreements. And that explains, you know, when the assessment was paid. Sometimes it was paid upfront at closing, sometimes it was paid in installments. Sometimes it was paid based off of how the normal assessment process for the city would work on any other property that you might do an improvement on, and then reassess back to the ultimate owner of the property. So, I don't know if that helps, but I could try to answer any questions if anybody might have any for me.
It does help a lot Craig. And Shane, what I was questioning here, I've got a project description of what, what we had out there. There was $128,000 expected, and that was, is that the dollars you're talking that came from the 10% forgiveness from the state?
Well, the sanitary sewer project, looks like it costs around $150,000, according to this project summary.
I guess my question is, is that Mr. Endris continually says that this was all stimulus package. And, and I need to understand this, the word stimulus, was that from the state? The 128 or 150,000 that was forgiven? Or, what are we seeing?
In our case, it was only 10% of the principal of whatever that SFR, you know, state revolving fund loan was. It looks to me, based on the numbers I see here, that the, the loan would have only been in about that $150,000 range. So 10% of that would have been your presumed stimulus money, if that's what you wanna call it. I mean, really, it was just a principal forgiveness, that those kind of ideas were run pretty, currently, across anything that had federal or state monies in it, they gave a lot of forgiveness back in those lean years during the recession. And, I guess, taking the numbers that were there, and really, that was the only breaks for, on funding here. The majority of this million dollars was all funded from city funds. It, it really was. So we're looking at, you know, maybe, what, 10, 15,000 that wasn't recovered through either assessment, or included in there for recovery through the assessments, or through other, other methods.
Something you wanted to add to that Craig?
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, my recollection is that that was done in two phases. So you did a stretch of that, 2010, 2009, 2010. And then you did the balance of that road the following year. And, so, yeah, you know, I can't say with 100% certainty, but if there was any stimulus money added to that outside of your normal budgeting process, I wasn't aware of it at the time.
And my understanding is, is that this project, this road project, was also included in the loan through the wastewater treatment facility. Is that correct?
Only the sanitary sewer portion had the loan on it. The rest of it was all financed, as I understand it, from Shelley, that through the city funds.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess I'll, I'll try to fill in the fine blanks that, that Craig's alluding to, as far as what we've been working with the development company, acquiring the, the data and the knowledge. And if you could pan out on, onto this side here, guys. So we took that million four, and that 50 cents a foot thing, and each one of these lines across here represents one of those lots that, on the original drawing. So, each line corresponds to one of these parcels here. And then, what we've done is take that, that information, and now, if you wanna pan back out to see this whole drawing. So this is those same properties boiled down to what we've collected and what we haven't collected. Everything in the green, these two on the top, these two in the middle, and these two on the bottom, and the one in the middle, nine, we've collected all of those. And so those collected dollar amounts equals 278,000. The total that we anticipated to collect was 866. The yellow line is a parcel that's still out in the county. And by our policies and, I think, state laws, we can't assess property that's not within the state limits. So, so that, that will not be collectible until that parcel's brought into the city. The pinkish colored ones are those that are in the city that remain uncollected. And then, I wanna point out that part of the process that the Watertown Development Company did, is as they were selling these lots off, they created, in their purchase agreements, a provision, and I'll read it to you, that buyers will pay all costs associated with any infrastructure improvements necessitated by the development occurring on the above described property, whether those improvements occur on public or private property. So, I have five signed agreements in my possession, and they correspond, or four of those correspond to these stars here. So those owners, I'll just use LACWA Industry as an example, we have that purchase agreement that says that they'll pay for the public infrastructure. And that would include an unpaid assessment in the amount of $53,514.98, as an example. And we have that for each one of those four that aren't on there. The, I will point out that the majority of the other uncollected assessments are owned by members of the Endris family. So whether there was some special agreement that exempted them from something, I, I have no knowledge of that. But that's, that's the remainder of the portion. And, I do wanna be clear, one of the key reasons that spurred all this research and, and, was this Lot 15. So, Michael and Michelle Meidinger recently purchased Lot 16, and paid their assessment in the amount of $53,939.70 at that time. But that raised a question with some of the remaining properties around there, why, you know, there was some knowledge that somebody knew that some of the assessments weren't paid, and some were, and, and. Yes. So, so this 15 also had the purchase agreement that should have included payment of the infrastructure in front of it. And that remains uncollected, and it's essentially the same. They're both identical sized lots, and one's been paid, one hasn't. So, what I'm looking for is, or not even looking for anything, I'm providing this information to you as a council, and then hopefully, we get some direction as to whether or not we're going to pursue collection on the outstanding assessments.
If I, and if I could just add a little bit more background, I think, from my perspective. So when you look at those years that are kind of in question, those were the years that we were discussing how to re, how to assess those properties. Our purchase agreements even allude to the fact that we all acknowledge that there might be some type of assessment. Nobody really knew what it was at the time, and we were trying to facilitate sales of these properties to folks that wanted to buy it. Specifically, in that Lot 15, I do remember in our discussions with the buyers at that time, 2009, that, you know, it wasn't an ideal lot. There was a part of it that was kind of on a swale. And so we, you know, kind of agreed to, to work with them on selling them that property, not knowing what the assessments were gonna be, and things like that. From the development company's perspective, as I said before, we really didn't, I don't know if this is the right way to look at it or not, but once the agreements were done and the money, money was collected, we didn't really have any interest in following up ourselves, or any requirements from our, from our perspective, on whether or not those assessments were collected. It was just our assumption that the city would then, however they would typically assess for those improvements, would go out and do that. And I would maybe say, in, in some of those earlier instances, that was just never followed through on. That's about the best I can come up with as far as an explanation. I mean, they're legitimately owed, but I don't believe that anybody followed up on it.
I think in hindsight, anytime we ever do another assessment project like this, it would have to be put on the properties and collected through the county, through the tax rolls. Otherwise, it's, it just, it gets lost in translation.
And I think that was the idea Mayor. I just don't know that whoever's responsible for following up on that did.
Unless they chose to pay it upfront.
Well, we use a, we've been using that word assessment here pretty heavily in this conversation. And in truth be told, these aren't actually assessments as such, because a true assessment has a certain procedure, and we're actually gonna see that later tonight in council. So a, a standard assessment, we, we would have to have assessment hearings and have all these owners come forward. And then, of course, there's a, an interest rate involved. This was all done without interest, and not setting any parameters of payback, except for the expectation, as I interpret it, was that as properties would sell off and change hands, that someone was gonna collect a fee. And I don't, what I believe in my research is that, that someone was probably never really truly identified. So the, the Watertown Development Corporation probably didn't know, or, or as Craig said, you know, they, they weren't concerned about collecting them. And then somehow, on our end of it, the city's end of it too, we just, we're, we're busy going forward and didn't look back to, to make any collections. So, I, I, I'm not, this whole exercise was never to exude blame, it's to seek direction, and how, how do we wanna recruit this if we're going to.
And I think if you, if you look at the transaction history, it's pretty clear that you can see three kind of transitional phases of how that land was sold. The first two would be with, with clawson construction and cabinet concepts. Then the next series would be those that were 2004 to 2009. And then after that, you know, 2010, 2011, we had a pretty consistent formula in place to make sure that the city was reimbursed for those expenses. And so, you know, Shane said, I, you know, I can't tell you why those assessments or those, those improvements weren't reimbursed, or weren't, you know, passed on to the county for collection in the property tax rolls. Our interest was only, from the development company's perspective, to, to facilitate the transaction. In some of those cases, those purchase agreements or purchase offers came from the mayor's office, and were negotiated between the mayor and the buyer. And we didn't know anything about it, other than, can you please do this for us? And we've done that before, you know we have. We've done that on projects recently, where we've, you know, helped to facilitate a land transaction between the city and, and a, and a commercial buyer. So we didn't question necessarily. And the basis of these agreements were really legal documents that were drafted by the city. And then, our attorney would, would kinda make sure that our agreement with the buyer was consistent with what the city had agreed to sell it to us for, if that makes sense.
I got a couple of questions. Were these improvements already done on all these lots at the time they bought them? Or were some of these improvements done after they purchased the property?
I would say it's about 50/50. Anything that was done before 2000, there were no improvements in this vicinity before 2009. And af, there was a series of projects by the end of 2011 that had finished it out. So, the majority of the improvements were done in that three-year period. And really, ideally, you would have began, if we would have went traditional assessments, we would have developed this assessment procedure in 2011 or 2012. And they would have been on tax rolls and collecting these assessments, probably with an interest variable included in it, as per our ordinance. And then, we would just, would have been collecting these over time through the tax rule.
Well, I guess what I'm alluding to is if I bought an unimproved property, and then those things got put in afterwards, I would expect I would owe for them?
Yes.
If I bought a property that was already improved, and thought I had a deal made that included that, and now you come back and say, well, you didn't pay for this, that's two different things to me. Am I wrong with that?
Well, every property within the community should pay for its first-time improvement.
But I, I don't disagree with that. But if, if the purchase of the property was done after the improvement, you would assume that these are those costs were in there, or be told that there's a bill outstanding for it. If, if you bought the property prior to that improvement got done, you know you didn't pay for it, 'cause it wasn't there before.
I would, I would say, maybe with the exception of the 2004 transaction with clawson construction, where I believe all we did was, was provide water, a water line, because that road was actually surfaced, hard surfaced, all the way to the end of the block. The water and sewer may not have been there at the time, but, but that was a, I don't know, the city, you know, you had asphalt when you put the road in, you finished it all the way to the end. With the exception of that one, and maybe the Coystonin lots, tho, the infrastructure was either in place, or being put in place, as those properties are being sold. So, in most cases, those buyers were aware that they were gonna be paying an assessment, or paying for the infrastructure. And that was either spelled out in the agreement to a specific dollar amount, or to a process as to how that would have been collected, once that dollar amount was determined.
Just for clarification, the purchase agreement at the time of sale for clawson construction did also include the language for paying for infrastructure improvements. So even that property back in 2004 was identified that if and when the streets improved, that it would include a, a investment on the buyer's behalf.
That, that one seems fairly forthright to me. I mean, the improvements weren't there, you know you're gonna pay for them. My question comes in, ones that later the improvements are done, and they buy it later. We had this 50 cents in there. Is there some assumption with that 50 cents, that they paid for everything? And is that 50 cents already deducted from this?
Okay, I, and I'm not gonna, Craig can clear up, what I don't, I guess. There were one or two purchases in, that are shown on this list in the green, that some of them included a final cost that included the improvements, and others did not. And I think, for the most part, all the ones in green that came later, the improvements were included in the closing costs. In other words, they paid a base fee to Watertown Development Company for how many acres they, they purchased. And then there was the 50 cents a square foot fee added to it as part of their purchase. And I believe, and I, and I'm not trying to isolate anyone, but I believe this Lot 16, that that's likely how that, that amount was determined and collected.
Did you say that 50 cents though, doesn't cover the total cost?
Well, Well, that was my impression originally, okay, was that when the city looked at their original costs for that infrastructure, it was much more than is reflected on the spreadsheet. I just, you know, that's recollection. There's nothing, you know, that I have that documents anything any differently. And so we kind of agreed that that 50 cents a square foot, even if it wasn't going to collect, even if it wasn't going to cover all the city's expense, was a fair cost to provide that property at a competitive rate. I will also tell you that the city took criticism from other developers for selling some of this property, 2004, 2009 in particular, because we were selling it for much less than other industrial property might be going for in smaller lots. The reason was, we were just selling it at a base price with the idea that, oh, you might owe some money later for infrastructure improvements. So it wasn't, when you really compared apples to apples, these lots are very, were very competitive with any other lot out there that would be used for a similar purpose, even in 2004.
When was 7 and 12 purchased? There's no date there.
That was part of the original Endries Farm, and I alluded to that earlier, that they actually owned the land before the projects and still own the land today.
So if you look at this map, this is just my recollection, Lots 12 and 13, 12, 13, and 14 were never part of this transaction, or if they were, there was something that was done before my time. And then in 15, 16, 17, 18, and the rest of those were all part of the Endries gift for this industrial park back in, I don't even know when you guys did that, 97 or something like that, so.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, I think. So it's quite a while, so the city had that land for quite a while before we'd ever did anything with it.
I guess I'm confused here. Okay, Craig, you said there's no doubt that, and now we would know those dollars, that that money is owed, but from a practical standpoint, do we have any way of collecting? I guess I'm asking you or Shelley or Justin. I mean, is this all water under the bridge at this point, or what recourse do we have at this late juncture now?
I won't, I'm not going to put words in anybody's mouth, and anybody can certainly clarify that. But I would say that with the purchase agreements that we have, if they've identified public infrastructure to be collected, that we would still have an opening to collect that. I don't know if there's any statute of limitations on that, Justin, that we would know.
I'd have to research that more specifically, but, you know, insofar as it's a contractual obligation, and if it's one that runs with the land, you know, that is a thought there that it's an ever-present obligation, but I'd have to do more research on it to give you a definite answer.
Have any of those properties changed hands so that the original party would have agreed to that and the next guy didn't even, isn't aware of it? There's nothing that you know of there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Just to not stick my neck out too far or anything, but if some people paid 50 cents, why don't we just do 50 cents on the other?
Well, because the improvements for a couple of those original lots wasn't that much. I mean, the cost wasn't that much. I will tell you that in probably all the discussions, whether I was directly involved or not, with these landowners that ultimately bought these lots, that there was a discussion about what the assessment potential would be, and that in a couple of instances where we didn't know exactly what that number was, we worked with Shane's predecessor, with the city engineering staff, to kind of come up with a ballpark number so we could provide that. And we would do kind of a, you know, negotiated deal where we would say, well, we think it's going to be, you know, 49, 50 cents a square foot, but we can't tell you for sure because we don't have the final numbers in, but we don't think it's going to be any more than. And that's how, in each of those agreements, we ended up agreeing to either a specific number or, you know, here's what, you know, or at least you acknowledge that you, as the buyer, will be responsible for that cost in the future.
Maybe you already said this, but you mentioned that the estimate was 49 or 50 cents. What is the actual cost? What's the updated estimate?
Well, the only document I had in front of me was that one that we showed here. Those are the numbers on how the dollar amounts that, in my view, were, some were collected and some were uncollected. And so those are really the only, that was my focus of the research, was to figure out that part of it, not dive back into the history and try to figure out why other people made other decisions, because I really, I really can't read through that.
I think his question is more, when you charge it, was it 50 cents or 49 cents?
I believe it's 50 cents.
Well, my question is, at that assessment level, will it or will it not cover the cost to develop the infrastructure?
According to the spreadsheet I have, that's how it was calculated. So 50 cents should cover the million for.
The people that have already paid the assessment, paid it at what level?
50 cents.
Okay.
I guess we have already tasked Justin with kind of looking into the legal obligations of some of the contracts and assessments and signed agreements. But as I was looking at the previous chart, the one with the pink and the green, you know, it occurred to me that five of those, there we go, kind of scooch it over to see the stars on the sides. So we have five signed agreements for assessments that weren't paid, and so I think I'd like to really explore that, the cost parts of it and everything. We can work with people who know what they're doing there. But, you know, as I look at this, we're leaving right now, we're leaving over a half a million dollars on the table, if you look at the two numbers. Do you see that? And that, that's not making me happy. So, you know, I don't know what we can do to bring those numbers closer together or to bring some of the people who have the signed agreements into compliance, or, you know, those are the things that I sit here looking at thinking, why don't we have the money?
I'll get you up in a minute, Bob. Hang on just one more minute, okay? Other questions for Shane or Craig while they're still up here? I guess we didn't have to wait that long, Bob. Craig, thank you for being here. Shane, if you'll hang on tight. Come on up, Bob. Come right up to the microphone, or we can give you a microphone here to use, and if you'll tell us your name and such for the record.
My name is Bob Endries, and we own some of that property, some of those lots that I'll allude to later here. But I think we're missing the whole point of really why we're here and how we got here. It seems to me like it was pretty hard to know what the rate was out there. You're saying now it's 49 cents. It sounds pretty clear. But when I recall what happened when the street went in, because I lived there, because we owned lots, several lots, four lots, so it made a big difference to me. And when they said there was a stimulus money, I thought, you can't believe I'd be that lucky to get a street out of the stimulus money. And that was my first thought. And as the time went on and they constructed the road and put the sewer in, they just hard-surfaced that the road was in earlier. But as all that went on, there was never a meeting like normally, when you put an improvement in the neighborhood or someplace, you normally will have a meeting of the landowners, and you'll tell them what you're going to do, you're going to tell them what the cost is, you're going to ask them, do you want to write the check out? Do you want it on assessments? That's a normal procedure. And that never happened at all. There was no contact, no landowners did nothing. Now, if we go down the line there, it's a little misleading of who really paid and who didn't pay, as I see. I'm only really actually talking about the first stretch that went in, part of 23rd Street, and it turned a curve there, and 14th went up to where Walmart has a holding pond there. Now, that's all I'm going to address, because the other street was part of a whole different agreement.
Can you show us that, Shane? Put that on the screen, what he's talking about.
I'm only going to, I'm only talking about Lot 7.
He's talking about?
I'm talking about Lot 7 and the concrete products. That's where it started, at Lot 7. You see the line in there. Okay, that was not, we never had any meeting there. A is Clossins. They never been contacted at all that a street was even going in. Never a word until I spoke to them here three weeks or three months ago. That's, A was Coystonin. He did pay a couple of years later. He got a statement in the mail, and he paid 42,000 bucks, he told me. Number 10 is the Flamboos. He paid assessment because he was buying his property when the street was going in. 11 was Laku. Laku was there, and he never got any assessment. 16 is a lot that really, why we're here. 15 is Miteger. And he paid, he never paid any assessment on 15. I never paid any on 13 or 14, and Joan never paid any on 12. So what we're talking about is kind of a fact here that only one assessment has been paid in six years. Not half of them or not most of them. There's only one assessment that's been paid, that's 9. He paid a couple of years ago. And all the while, it leads me to think that it was still stimulus money. I think it was stimulus money. The reason I think it is is because I didn't just wake up one morning and say, I think this is stimulus money putting this road in. I heard it. I heard it on the radio or I read it in the paper. And the second thing is that no meetings at all. You always meet with the landowner. So why meet with them? It was the government's money, you need no meeting, just put it in. We knew nothing about the street. Nobody knew anything about it. You just come out and start building the street. And third is, if there's $500,000 missing out of the treasurer's office, how in the world does anybody account for that? Now, it was before you. Don't look at me like that. It was before any of you guys, really, because, you know, when I first called Stanton Fox, when I look at Justin there, when I first called Stanton Fox, I said, Stan, I don't think this is right. You're charging for assessment on Mike's lot out there, which would be 16. I said, I don't think that's right. And Stanton, if I can repeat, he isn't here, but I think I can tell it the way he said it, he said, oh my God, he said, and I didn't want to screw that up. He said, I talked to, I think I don't miss, I don't think I missed a person in the street department. And I asked him, was that stimulus money or not? I thought, gee, Stan, I'd have just walked over here to the treasurer's office. But where were all these numbers when I asked Stanton? You know, they all been created, all these numbers have really been created since I raised the question, was it stimulus money or not?
I will clarify that. All of this research and all of these documents were done way back in 2011, so that's not true.
Okay. Well, I certainly stand correction, because I don't know that I made a true statement. I don't know when they were created. But it seemed to me like nobody was talking about stimulus money. Nobody was talking about recovering this 500 grand. Nobody said a word about it. It would have just passed if I hadn't brought up the question. Mike paid on 16, and I don't believe he should have. And that created all this here. And I'd still like to know how $536,000 could be missing out of the treasurer's office. Now, I'm certainly not a secretary or a treasurer, or a bookkeeper, I should say, or know anything about it. But, you know, if you wrote a check out to the contract for $536,000, if you wrote a check out for $536,000, and you didn't have an assessment coming in from Endries and from Miteger and from Clossins, then the books don't balance. There's a $536,000 hole in the audit. So it was stimulus money. So I just say to you guys, I feel that my first thought was stimulus money. I didn't hear nothing when I seen it and heard it on the radio and seen it in the paper. Secondly, we had no meetings at all. That isn't the way it's done. Well, it was stimulus money. Thirdly, there was no assessments. Why? Well, it was stimulus money, and there's no hole in the treasurer's office because it was stimulus money. So you're really not losing $536,000. You just got 530, you really have collected from a couple of people that I would think would be unfair.
I have a question, I guess, and that, sorry, Craig. Why would the other people have paid that? Why did the others that did pay not believe that this was stimulus money?
I believe that every single contract would say that you pay for assessments. You agree to pay for the assessments. I'm sure they all say that. But if there's no assessment because it was stimulus money, there was no collection. They would have paid it. If they would have sent them a bill and said, okay, here, we're going to put the street in, it's going to cost X numbers of dollars, this is your share, everybody would have paid. But somebody's, the city's expected me to come up with $230,000, $40,000, six years late. You're asking, oh, Bob, we want these back taxes or assessments that's been six years ago, and we'd like to have you pay now.
What would be interesting, though, and Craig, you can step in, I don't understand why we would have taken out a loan for one point, X amount of dollars. If it had been stimulus money, we would not have had a loan. Am I correct?
I don't imagine you would have, if you took a loan out to do it.
You know, the only thing I could add, is this working? Okay. The only thing I could add to this is, I do, and I'm, you know, I don't want to muddy the waters up probably any more than they are, but I do think that we didn't really, in our discussions about these assessments, any of the property that was already privately owned, so for instance, any of Bob's property or Joan's property, I don't think that they were probably ever approached about them having to pay an assessment. I don't think that they would necessarily be on the line for paying for those assessments because we decided that was how some of the cost was negotiated, because, you know, if you remember, I told you that my recollection was that the land cost or the infrastructure cost was actually higher than 50 cents a square foot, but that was just a number that we all agreed to. Now, unfortunately, I, you know, wasn't responsible or didn't track those numbers, so I can't tell you if there was a different number out there. And the set of numbers we're looking at were after other funds were maybe diverted to it, or what may be the case. Lot 16 specifically, though, I can tell you because of when that happened, that was identical to any other property that sold after 2010. And that assessment was clearly part of that property and clearly part of the agreement.
Craig, I'd like to add to that discussion, because your point's right on, I think. But the other ones, these ones that I had starred on this sheet, those are the ones that we have agreements that dictated that we would collect the assessments. If you notice that the privately-owned or previously privately-owned Endries properties are not included in that list. So I think there's a clear, there was two clear processes that were going on. Everything that was sold before 2009 had these agreements in place that they would pay for the infrastructure when they were put in. Everything after that is essentially in the green, and the Watertown Development Company's been collecting those as those properties sold. And those were primarily after the 2011 improvements, or somewhere within those projects. So I think that there's a distinct cutoff between 2009, what happened before that, and what happened after that. And the only thing that's left in the gray, I'll say, is the formerly-owned Endries properties and the concrete plant are the only ones that really fall into the no-man's land. The rest of them look like they were fairly clearly defined as to how they were intending on collecting or pursuing those.
You've got, what, three green ones that don't have any assessment? Or two? What's? One green one up there for Stromseth that doesn't have any?
You're looking at the wrong column, I think. All of these in the green side in this column are collected. This just didn't show a date in here for a purchase date, but the assessment was collected.
But number 18 doesn't have any number in it. That's green. It's best I can tell.
That one was included in the total purchase price of the... That one was included in the total purchase price of the, in other words, their, their assessment was collected through the lot sale and didn't get reflected as a separate collection, if I remember it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. Yep.
But it is past what we're talking about. They have all paid. The street was in. They were either paid for it or they're on the assessment roll. There's no question about, about McKeever or Wicks or, there's no question at all. Stimson, all those, they were all aware of it. They got their tax statement. And either they paid for it or they were, had the assessment. That's got nothing to do with what I'm talking about.
No, I think actually, if I can interrupt for a minute, all of those, since 2011, we knew what the assessment was. And so in the purchase agreements, we specifically outlined what that cost was. And we either collected at X closing or had an agreed upon date to collect it. So anything prior to that, we were a little bit in what I would consider a gray area because we weren't exactly sure what those assessments would be on those lots. So that would have been that 2010, eleven, or 2009, 2010 timeframe.
But there was verbiage in the contract, so...
But there was verbiage in the contract that said, "Once we knew what that was, you would agree to pay for it." So specifically, any of the property that the city owned and that they sold to private developers, the property improvements is due and payable. Any property that was not part of the city, I don't think you have any ability to necessarily go back and recoup your costs on those infrastructure improvements.
I have a question. Stimulus dollars, were there stimulus dollars actually attached to this? Specifically to this? Did we have any stimulus monies at a point in time that were...
Let me just answer.
In other words, were there, was there anything earmarked for this?
No. Basically, the stimulus that was talked about here, at that time, they were through the SRF program. And that's actually water, clean water or, you know, which is stormwater or sanitary sewer. And so we did a great big, our SRF nine project, which included five different projects, which included the sanitary sewer for this street project. The rest of the money came from the second penny sales tax and it was a street project. There is no stimulus money for streets. There's no federal funding for streets. That's why we get the highway bridge money. That's the tax back that we're supposed to use for, for street projects and then our second penny. So there was, when they talked about the city getting stimulus money, like he said, about a hundred and fifty thousand of it with the ten percent principal forgiveness and the rest is a loan that we're paying off over twenty years back to the state. The rest is a regular street that was taken out of the second penny sales tax and paid for out of that. And we do have all the records that show all the payments that were made from that. And then based on that, it was brought through the engineering department to come up with a cost recovery method. And, you know, from there, that's the information I know from what my position was back at that time.
So the sewer, so the sewer projects are not a part of the assessment. Is that correct? Because of the stimulus or am I wrong?
They are, but the...
Less the ten percent that we got forgiven.
So the part that was forgiven, the ten percent principal, was reflected that they, it's not included in the assessments?
And if I could add to even Shelley's comments, from a budgeting standpoint, at that time, the city used to dedicate, I want to say a hundred and fifty thousand a year annually towards industrial park improvements. And you kind of rolled that money over from year to year. And that's specifically, I think, where that second penny source came from to pay for tho, to pay for that initial road improvement.
And am I, am I correct in believing that these properties were sold at what a lot of folks would have thought would have been less than market value? To help with the burden of the assessment. Is that correct?
Well, I think we ended up in a situation where that's the perception was that we were, you know, the, you know, if you'd read it in the newspaper here down the press, you would have heard that we approved a purchase agreement for twelve thousand five hundred per acre. But the reality was, it was twelve thousand five hundred per acre plus whatever infrastructure you might have to pay for when those roads, water and sewer were put in.
They're talking about the sewer and stuff and it doesn't even go down Twenty-third Street where I'm talking. The sewer comes down Twenty-third Street to about there. This goes backwards, I guess. It goes about to there and then it goes, it goes... Can you run it?
No, I got it.
It's a little hard. But it, the sewer almost cuts off everything, again, that we're really talking about tonight. I'm not talking about fifteen.
But all those, but Bob, all those lots are serviced by sewer. I mean, yeah, they are. All the lots the city of Watertown sold to private developers has sanitary sewer service.
I don't have sanitary sewer.
But yours was never owned by the city.
Yes, it was owned by the city.
Which lot?
Eleven and twelve.
But, but those were, those were not part of the original Endries Industrial Park. You guys kept those lots as part of that transaction.
That's not true, Craig. We gave that, we gave that, twelve, twelve we kept, thirteen and fourteen we gave to the city. And later, later it was a purchase that we bought it back from the city. And, and that's for a fact. You can take that to the bank.
Right. I agree, but that was prior to the industrial park being created.
No, you created industrial park when we gifted the land.
And so you gifted lots twelve and thirteen?
That's true. No, no, no.
And then you bought them back?
No. Twelve we never, twelve we kept. Thirteen and fourteen we gifted.
And then you bought them back?
Then we bought them back. And we bought them back almost the same way. We really shouldn't have, you know. The mayor told us that we could, could farm that, we gave, we gifted the land. And the mayor said we could farm it as long as, as long as it wasn't sold. They said we were digging gravel in thirteen and fourteen. They said we could continue to take the gravel out. It actually was improving the park because there was a hill there. And then all at once, they were having a big concern in the city that we were taking gravel off the city's land. So I said, "Well, we'll just buy twelve, we'll buy thirteen and fourteen." So we gifted it one year and two, three years later, we bought it back. And we wrote the city out a check for twelve, thirteen and fourteen. And that's how that happened.
And I would agree, that's probably how it happened, but what I would tell you is, when that was put together as an industrial park, master plan by the city and the infrastructure improvements were started in 2004, 2005, those lots were never considered part of the park because they were already privately owned. So my guess is, and I don't have the exact dates, but my guess is that transaction where you bought those lots back happened before 2004.
Well, Cabinet Concepts, I guess they run their sewer with the lift station and those Clausens do the same, I suppose. They probably do the same.
Just leave me, leave this here for a second, please. This is Twenty-third Street, North and South. This is Fifth, whatever.
You're on target.
Fourteenth Avenue.
Make sure you got your mic on, will you Shane?
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so the north-south piece is Twenty-third Street, this, or Twenty-third Avenue. This is, or Twenty-third Street, excuse me, and Fourteenth Avenue. This is, I believe, Clausen Construction is one of these two lots.
Clausen is right there.
Is this one? Okay, and this is the McKeever property, correct?
Cabinet Concepts.
Or Cabinet Concepts, okay, Cabinet Concepts, Clausen. And then, so the portion of the sanitary sewer that received the revolving loan funds is this piece that's shown here in the back lot lines. Then after that, everything, the sanitary sewer was run down the center of the road. So that's how the sanitary was done. This was one of the three initial projects. The other two, and just for clarity, this is, the first project was done, what's shown in green here. Then it was that sanitary sewer project that we just looked at. Then in 2011, that was the green there. Minus this piece right here was put in in 2011. So those are the three projects we're talking about. That's how all of these costs were generated and how they were calc, they were calculated off of these three projects. So for clarity, I mean, that, those were essentially the projects. There is sanitary sewer and full utilities all the way along that entire route.
Shane, can you pull that assessment sheet back up?
You want?
The one that shows?
This one?
Yeah. So, you know, those two lot, they're not on there. The Integrity Tool and Die lots, for example. So prior to all of these improvements being done, that, that property had already been sold. So that would be similar to how lots twelve and thirteen and fourteen or thirteen and fourteen were sold back to Bob. Lots twelve, those lots that are Integrity Tool and Die were sold prior to any of these improvements. And they don't pay, they're not paying any assessment on those improvements, even though those improvements were done in front of their property as well. So I guess if that makes sense, that kind of explains the transition from when, when Endries took the two lots back to when the rest of these properties were sold as part of that industrial park. They were just separate land transactions with separate terms. So there wasn't any kind of carryover from, you know, the sale of Lot thirteen and fourteen to Lot fifteen or to the Integrity Tool and Die lots. Because those lots, so I've been with Watertown Development Company since 2003 and all of those properties have, have been outside of that city-owned industrial park prior to that time. So, and really, none of these transactions happened prior to 2003. So that, that we're specifically speaking about in terms of who owes assessments and who doesn't.
Well, what got us here was the fact that I thought it was stimulus money. I thought sixteen was collected improperly by an accident, just that it was wrong. And that's what got us here. But if I'm wrong, then someone tell me and you'll all understand it very well. How do you account for the five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar hole in the treasurer?
I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer and I'm not a realtor, but common sense tells me that each and every one of these properties should have a purchase agreement, correct? And does each and every purchase agreement have some kind of stipulation to the assessment to it?
Sure.
It does. It does, Randy. It just says that, you know, that they, that they're responsible for any current or future public assessments to those properties. And they all acknowledge that when they, when they purchase that property.
That should be pretty simple then.
So the issue is not whether or not there's a hole in the, you know, you're missing money. You're not missing money. It's just never been collected.
We're missing that piece of the pie. It's why it was never collected.
You're missing money because you wrote a check out to the contractor, the city did, for five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And the books indicate nothing that there's any assessment put on the property. There doesn't say this, I mean, if they would have come and wanted the assessment from me, I may have wrote out a check. It doesn't account for that. It doesn't account for an assessment. They don't audit the books with purchase agreements. I mean, where is the assessment at? It was never put on. It isn't on yet today. It isn't on yet today. It's just that it might go on tomorrow. And I just think that, that the city, if nothing else, I say it was stimulus money. There was stimulus money floating all over. South Dakota got nine, ten million dollars or, yes, they got nine or ten million dollars of stimulus money. I heard Watertown got stimulus money for shovel-ready project and I'm, I'm dead set that it is. And how would you account for the hole in the budget? Because there is a hole in the budget.
Now, just out of curiosity, don't we have a loan out for this?
Yes, we do.
So how is that a hole? If we owe the money?
You have to pay the loan off with some. It don't matter if it's loan or you took it out of the cash. You have to, you have to account where this money's coming from. How are you going to pay for it? Oh, it's coming from an assessment from Endries. It's coming from a check from Miteger. That accounts, that makes the books balance. But you got a hole in the budget, no matter how you can, and this would have never been brought up if I hadn't, hadn't thought that Miteger was charged and he paid and that I thought that it was kind of unfair that he had to.
And what I could, what I could do to maybe try to clarify that again is just to explain that none of those properties that were, that were already owned by individuals outside of the city were intended to be assessed. But you still did the improvements and so they in fact did get a deal. They got a deal because their property was improved and they didn't have to pay, they didn't have to pay for the improvements. The only people that paid for improvements were the people that would buy that land from the city of Watertown through the Watertown Development Company from 2004 on.
Okay.
It's just trying to...
Any other quick questions that you have for, for the gentleman? We could, we could argue all night long about stimulus and I apologize, Bob.
But we always get off the point, I feel, if I make one more comment because nine is...
One more, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nine is the only one that had its assessment. Well, when you sit down and write out an assessment for nine, pray tell me why you wouldn't write out an assessment for the rest of them? Why didn't Clausens pay? Why didn't Midwest Motor Freight pay? All right, so the concrete plant was in the county. I mean, I just don't understand how anybody, I mean, we can say, "Oh, it wasn't stimulus money." You know, you might say, "I didn't get out of bed this morning." But I'm here, so, you know, I must have got out of bed. And I don't see how you could end up with a hole in the budget. And I just can't see it. And how come only one that got an assessment was nine? Why does, all that is, is one person out of eight or seven, eight lots, only one got an assessment two years ago.
No, I don't, I don't think that, fill me in on that Craig, because, if you would, because I think there's more than just one we're charged on that.
All of, all of the, all of the properties agreed, you know, all of those properties agreed to pay the assessment. Whether or not the city or the county that collects the property taxes implemented that collection process, I mean, that's really what it is, is it was never implemented. The collection process was never implemented. So it's not a matter of whether or not they did or didn't agree to pay for the, for the improvements. They did. That's clear in the purchase agreements. It's a matter of whether or not, at the administrative level, those improvements were ever paid for. So what happens, and you've all been there, is you get a statement every six months that says, "Here's what you owe plus your assessments." And you either pay it or you don't. And if you don't pay it, it's up to somebody to collect it. Now, I can't tell you what happened specifically with Clausen's, why they haven't or have, but, you know, Coysterman was a stand-up guy. He paid it as soon as he got it. He was aware that he owed it.
I think what we'll do is, is take a look at the Public Works Committee. I wonder if we shouldn't get them together and have more further discussion on that. We can do that. Can we not? Why not?
Wouldn't an assessment like this be registered to the county correctly? Shouldn't it be registered to the county?
So we use the word assessments a lot. It's not an assessment. This is a, all the land that was donated to the city was sold off in chunks to various individuals through the Watertown Development Company. Each and every one of those off properties that were optioned out for sale included a cost recovery dollar amount. And basically, that's what we've been showing you tonight. The difference is, is that the ones that were in the green, that all happened after 2011, were clearly collected. The ones that have the stars by them, that are in the pink, were transactions that happened prior to 2011 and just simply haven't been collected yet. So really, in my opinion, the whole part of this process that we brought this out is to get input on whether or not these are collectible, recoverable dollars.
I guess I see it boiling down to two, two basic questions here is, one, I mean, I, I share your concern, but I mean, geez, I mean, are we, are we out those kind of dollars to city? But I guess it's a question of, do we as a city have the, and I'm not sure if I do myself necessarily, do we have the appetite to go back and try to, all of a sudden, try to collect something from somebody that has no idea what, that they might owe something? But secondly, we can't ignore this. I guess I would definitely like to see us go back and try to find out, you know, what our recourse is if we do want to try to pursue this and find... our recourse is if we do want to try to pursue this and find out what our options are at this point.
That's why I asked the question about purchase agreements. I mean, that gives us a way whether or not it was an agreeable purchase.
If I could just, I mean, if I could just add to that, I guess, you know, from my perspective, and again, I'm only talking about things that have happened since 2003, you have purchase agreements in place on all of those properties, they owe you that money, they've agreed to pay that money.
You know, I can't, I really struggle to believe that the city of Watertown had, had there been stimulus monies to cover all this, would even entertain the idea of trying to collect it, if that's the case. And I think we've established the fact that there was stimulus money and what it was for, and sort of a dollar amount. So, I think it's fair to say that that was not, I mean, this was not paid for with stimulus money, I believe that.
Well, I respect that, I've been told that before, that it probably isn't stimulus money, but then you have to account how you can have a $540,000 hole in the budget.
Right, okay, let's move on. Are we going to, we're not going to act on this tonight, Shane, but I do think that it actually needs more entertainment, we need to look at this and come to a conclusion of what we're going to do as a city, so...
And that's exactly what I want.
Yeah, and I'm going to leave it at that for now. Thank you, Bob, I appreciate it. Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Shane, thanks. Okay, I do have a couple of future items that we're going to put on. I was hoping to have a little time tonight, but I don't. One will be to talk about the mall, we have a meeting October 25th. Just so you understand that, I believe we have two council people that will be in that meetings, if I'm not mistaken. Any two of you guys?
Three.
Three?
Well, there's...
I'm looking for names right now.
Myself. Mike and Don.
Okay, perfect. So, we have three folks that are going to be sitting in on that meeting, there'll be all the stakeholders from the mall are involved, there'll be Justin, myself, and just numerous people there. So, we'll look forward to that, see kind of what's going on and what we're looking at. The other one that I know I don't have time for this evening is, I would like to move forward with getting a retail strategies, a retail coach, or Buxton. I want to bring some information in front of you folks. We've had this conversation about bringing in retail to the city of Watertown, and I think the clear choice is out there, but we really don't have time right now, so that'll be coming to you at the next work session, okay? Any other questions or comments before I adjourn this meeting?
I'll email you my long list of future agenda items.
Okay, all right, put it on the list, very... Okay, at this time, I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll be back at 7 o'clock for the council meeting. Thank you.
I was ready to work for the scruff on my neck, yearning to find something of my own to protect.
Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I will look for a motion and a second for discussion.
Motion.
Motion by Bruce.
Second.
Second by Dan. I think you all sent out a copy of this to go into your packet. I know that it was missing at this time. So, I'll turn this over to Shane if you want to take a look at it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The drawing that we added to the packet at the last minute is this drawing that's up on the screen currently. The area shaded in red is the 1601-D and the area in blue is 1601-E. So essentially, they were let under one contract. We did receive very favorable bids throughout the project and we also included storm sewer down the length of 12th Avenue Southeast commencing at the west end of really essentially right where the red lines are and extended it all the way to 17th Street Southeast so that we can expand the storm sewer collection in this vicinity. And the only reason I bring that out is we did include that in this project, but we paid for that under a different budget item. So, the storm sewer work that was done is not included in the assessments. So, we did that with our annual stormwater budget and it's not inclusive of that in these assessments. So, with that said, I will say that the east-west road here, 12th Avenue Southeast, comparing the preliminary assessments that we had prepared and the actual assessments at the end, they did go down by an average cost of 10%. And the blue area here on 15th Street, those assessments, the average deduction in pre-versus-post assessment cost is negative 22%. So, both projects went down throughout the course of bidding and completing the work. So, with that, I guess unless there's any individual questions, I'd...
Well, one of the things I want to be clear about is if you recall, and I'm not sure the date, but the folks who were in here at the time when we talked about the assessments and the council voted to go ahead and do that at the time to proceed with the process.
Right.
And I also want to be clear that these are going against the property that will be collected by the county over a period of x amount of years. Am I correct?
Correct. Through our standard...
Exactly.
...policy. And I do want to point out that at the time of approval to go forward with the assessment procedures, I believe some... The motion included a reduction in our standard interest rate. Our standard interest rate for our assessment procedure has been 10%. This project was approved setting the interest rate at 4%.
Perfect. So, has anybody got any questions for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for Shane for getting that done. Number five, ordinance number 1620, amending sections 21.0210, 21.7310, 21.8006, and 21.9901 of the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown to clarify punishments for violations of Title 21. This is a second reading and at this particular time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion.
Motion.
Motion by Glenn, second by Beth, I'm sorry. Justin, if you want to take this on.
Certainly, Mayor. Just to be brief, you will recall that this measure is purely a housekeeping measure to ensure that, you know, the public-facing document or revised ordinances provide for one comprehensive punishment chapter at the end of Title 21. And so, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Just, the only question I've got is, is it... There's a date on this first page, a couple dates that refers to 10/3/16. Will that be changed to today's date?
Yes, I will make that change. That would be considered a scrivener's change. So, I... Well, Shelley and I will get together and make that change per our revised ordinances.
He's not kidding either when he brings it up to me. It's kind of scribbler thing, you know? No, I'm just kidding you, Justin. Oh, I get it.
Use a pen or a crayon?
Yeah, there you go. Any other comments, any questions for Justin on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six, approval of the 2016 update to the long-term equipment replacement schedule and capital projects plan. Shelley, if you want to give us a little information and then I'll look for a motion and a second.
I can. There were no changes from the documents that you guys had originally received during the public hearing meetings, so I didn't attach. It's kind of a big file, so it slows down your download ability. It's on our website, available to anyone. So, and then I also did email you that same document this afternoon, just in case you had any questions. But, there were no changes made during those public hearing meetings and so I'm asking that that gets approved as it was presented and as it was discussed during those meetings.
Perfect. So, at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Randy. Any questions yet for Shelley? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, capital outlay accumulations for 2017, resolution number 1635. Shelley, if you want to do that again.
Sure. This is just kind of basically a formality to complete the process. This allows the finance office to set funds aside for future capital projects and it's based on that long-term plan. It has been reflected in the ordinance that you guys adopted at the end of September and this again is just kind of a formality for the auditor to show that you did authorize those monies to be set aside for future capital projects, so...
Perfect. So, I will look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any questions for Shelley? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, resolution authorizing election of members of Watertown Cottigny County Regional Railroad Authority, resolution number 1636. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion, then we'll let Justin take over. Motion by, who was it down there? Bill? Second by Mr. Buehler. Any questions on that? Well, I'm sorry, we'll turn it over to Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in June of 2002, the city joined with the county to create this railroad authority and the authority has, per its statutory powers, the ability to own railroads as well as to maintain, operate, and to obtain funds through the governing bodies that constitute it, i.e. the county commission as well as the city council, taxing funds, taxing levies through property. Our railroad commission has been very dormant or relatively dormant, not taking on a lot of activities. But nevertheless, per the agreement, Article Six, every time a commissioner leaves, another commissioner has to be appointed. In this case, my predecessor left and so this resolution would appoint Shelley and myself as two members, the two members that the city gets to appoint, to a five-member railroad board. The other two are provided, are appointed by the county and then there is a fifth at large who is Jim Sire with Glacial Lakes Energy.
Any questions that we have for Justin on this? This board, as Justin said, it's just hardly ever met. I think we did meet at one particular time for the Glacial Lakes Energy out there, so it's been the first time in many, many years. So, if there's no other questions, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, platte of Watertown Sports Complex, first addition to the municipality of Watertown, resolution number 1614. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Bruce. Okay, Shane, if you want to show us what you got over there.
All right. Our platte was prepared by Helms &amp; Associates and it's a portion of the project that was in conjunction with the development of the five-plex softball complex which is located in the lower part in Lot 1, Lot 2, and also reserving space for the future potential ice arena which would be located in Block 1, Lot 1. Just to give you a little better idea of where that's located, it's located in the southeast portion of town along 17th Street Southeast and below 14th Avenue Southeast. It did create two additional blocks of street, the extension of 14th Street Southeast and the creation of 17th Avenue Southeast going east and west. So, with that, any questions? I'm glad to answer them.
Any questions for Shane on that? I would like to just comment by using this. I think Randy, I sent you a note the other day. This is about a $1.4 million savings for the city by using our own properties, which I think is a huge, huge thing for us. So, if not hearing any more, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, resolution establishing a standing council policy to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute contracts for municipal hangar leases pursuant to SDCL 91-5, resolution number 1637. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion.
Motion.
Motion by Bruce, second by Bill. And then, Justin, if you want to take that for me?
Certainly, Mayor. This resolution is in keeping with SDCL 9-1-5. Now, that statute provides that contracts with the municipality are to be authorized to go through the city council. But that statute also allows for the city council to delegate that authority to enter into a certain type of contract via either ordinance or resolution to an individual within city government. So, the reason why this particular hangar lease issue came up is because of the unique nature of this type of lease. It is one of the few, if not the only leases that we have in city government that go month to month because of the very fluid nature. And I make reference to that nature in the preambulatory clauses on the resolution here. But suffice it to say, because of that particular nature of the lease being month to month, folks coming in, folks coming out, in order to respond effectively with those narrow timeframes, Todd Siree with the airport suggested it might be a good idea to get that special authority to the mayor, only for those very particular type of leases, the hangar leases. So, I see Todd's back there. If you have any questions substantively, I'm sure he's happy to answer any.
Any questions, guys?
Just a couple. How much are those things renting for again? It's not a tremendous amount of money, is it?
I've never seen him quite move that fast, huh? He's a cobra.
We have hangers from $150 a month all the way up to $250 a month.
Yeah, I have no issue with it, but just a question, 15, 20 years from now, the mayor at the time has his own plane and gets a great deal on a lease. All right? So, I realize we're talking small dollars, just in the idea of transparency, any issues with that?
Certainly. That's a very fair question that you, or possibility you proposed, Councilman. Within our Home Rule Charter, we have a blanket provision regarding conflicts of interest. And so, that mayor would have to be beholden to that conflict of interest provision, as would every member of this board, as well as every officer in state government employee, or in city government employee, et cetera.
Good question. Any other questions?
Todd, did you say that we are competitive with, we've had this conversation before, that our rates are competitive now with other airports of our size or bigger?
Yes, we are very competitive. It's actually a little over $70,000 a year is what I get from hangar rent.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks. Number 11, renewal of the flexible benefits plan and administrative agreement with Wilmark. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. A motion by Bruce. Second by Beth. And Shelley, if you want to just touch on that for us?
Yep. This is something that we do each year. We approve the third-party administrator to our flexible benefits plan for our health and daycare. And there were no changes to the plan, no changes in the administrative fee or the monthly amount. The only variable is the number of participants because it's per participant. We've been very consistent with the 65 to 68 per year, so we usually budget about 69. So, if you have any specific questions, I can sure answer them.
Any questions for Shelley on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, authorization for the finance officer to sign a consulting services agreement withhold benefits consulting for ADA compliance and measurement in the amount of $7,500. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don.
Second.
Second by Glenn. And then, Shelley, if you'll touch on this for us.
Sure. Audra, who is our HR coordinator, and I were working on the compliance aspect of the Affordable Care Act for all of our part-time, variable-hour employees, which is pretty close to 450 of them. Both of us soon learned that with the complexity of the laws and how many different situations we have, that we just did not have the time or the expertise to find the policies that we needed, the procedures that we needed to put in place, the education piece that we needed to put in, and then the tracking mechanisms. And so, once we determined that we needed some additional help, we kind of looked at our timeframe and it was narrow. And so, we did some research and we contacted Hoalt McDowell. They do have a very large staff. They do have one particular gal, Abby, who we're working with, who is their ACA expert. She spent three years doing nothing but helping companies like us get ACA compliant. And we've asked that this be done prior to the end of the year so that we know in open enrollment that we are in compliant and that we have things set up to start the 2017 year. So, we're kind of running on a little bit of a short timeframe. But what this is going to do is they will help us create policy and procedures. They're going to help us put a tracking mechanism in place for both new employees, which have a different tracking timeframe, and the current ones. Then we're also going to do an education piece, an implementation piece, to our department heads and anyone who tracks, manages, deals with these various part-time employees. So, you know, we were grateful that with most insurance companies are dealing with renewals right now and so they're really pressed for time. So, I appreciate their time and their expertise. Without this, the city does have a large potential liability that gets opened up for not doing this, not tracking this, not being in compliance, not showing that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that 95% of our population that works an average of 30 hours or more is getting offered insurance. And so, we just, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on that and putting what we need to in place. And so, that's what this contract will do.
I'd like to also add that I do believe the council here will be seeing something coming forward within the next quarter that they can, they can have something to eat on and take a look at and there's just going to be some changes happening here for us.
Shelley, I have one question. It's about an 87-day contract. Your termination clause is 90, so you really can't terminate it. Do you need a reason to terminate it for something shorter, maybe, you know, a 30-day or anything like that?
No, and I think that's probably just standard language that came in their... Well, you know, I asked them for something in writing contractually that they would do for the money that they were asking and they just kind of gave us some standard contract language and I'm guessing that's where that came in. They'd given it to us, I think, in September and now we're coming to this point where we're going to ask for improvement.
Would it be worth, you say we want a 30-day termination, you're going to need it?
We sure can. Yep.
Shelley, first of all, a clarification because our agenda refers, this is the ADA compliance, it's ACA.
ACA, yep. Yep, just the typo.
Do you anticipate needing to utilize this service in the future?
No, nope. This is a one-time. Once we get all of our tracking mechanisms, we get our spreadsheet set up, we, you know, kind of get the rules to the game, then we just keep going forward.
Just a comment, in our profession, we have seen, I mean, I wholeheartedly support going through this, we kind of refer to the ACA in our business as a law of unintended consequences. It is hurting so many parties that it's intended to help and it is a terrible piece of legislation in my opinion.
Yep, yep. And that's where the mayor was talking about, in the future, we're going to maybe see some change because I think this is probably just the first of many changes and I think we just need some ongoing support with that and I think we'll kind of do that through whoever kind of our enrolled agent is, through insurance. And that's the process that we're kind of going to look at so that we get this ongoing help, that we don't have to keep contracting out for services.
Any other questions? This is, this actually, folks, is a good move on the city's part with Shelley and Audra working on this tightly. Okay, any other questions then? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 13, consideration of additional airport staffing. This is for one additional person at this particular time unless our airport just starts going crazy. But what I would like to do, I think you all had a chance to look at this, I fully support one person. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion and we'll bring Todd into the picture. Motion by Randy, second by Bruce. Yeah, and Todd, if you want to step up and give us an idea of what's going on.
Sure. So, jet service has been going very well at the airport. Been very receptive in the community as we see our numbers just keep skyrocketing weekly is what it's going up. But just to give you a little background on the current rules and regulations, obviously the federal government doesn't follow our calendar. There are federal fiscal years, so they start October 1st. Hence, I'm here today and not back in July asking for this, so I apologize. But our current jet is, it puts us into an index B category instead of an index A for ARF, Airport Fire Rescue. So, what that means is we have to mandatory have two staff on duty anytime we have that jet on the ground for ARF. So, how we've alleviated that issue currently is the fire department's supplying one person and my staff got certified, along with myself, to cover the lapse in any times we have currently, even overnight, so we've been taking that on as well. So, another thing they put into effect is the ARCAM system. It's a runway condition assessment matrix. This one will affect October 1st through the FAA. They're coming out with a lot of new advisory circulars lately. It seems like the last year, we've had about three of them that have hit pretty hard with smaller airports of our size. You know, they never tell you how much staffing you need, they just tell you how much job duties you have and then it's up to the cities to man them in case of any accidents or anything. They'll come back and look at all of our paperwork, of course. The growth at the airport is just tremendous. I've been fortunate enough to see the last three years on how general aviation has just exploded. We went from 26-based aircraft three years ago to 54-based aircraft, a few jets and a helicopter. So, I was just on the phone the other day with Prairie Lakes and for the next 20 months, we're going to have all of the helicopters coming in for transfers, landing at the airport. So, that will add additional work hours for myself and my staff, but we're happy to take it on. So, as far as the other revenue sources that we have, commercial fuel sales, we're doing, just in the jet, we're doing 1,200 gallons a day at four cents a gallon. That's not including any of the private jets coming in, not including any of the 100 low-led smaller aircraft. They're all at four cents a gallon as well. So, we've been seeing a real big uptick in that number. We're actually ordering glycol for the airlines currently and we're charging them $2 a gallon for every 270-gallon tote. We charge them $2 per gallon for that, above and beyond our cost. The airline is actually buying diesel and unleaded fuel due to the fact that it's a little, it's pretty unsafe for them to drive their tug and their carts and such down the road to the gas station to get fuel, go across the highway and then come back. So, we've set up an agreement with them that they could buy fuel from us at a cost. We have, in the past, we've had charter opportunities and we've taken advantage of those. You know, that's something that the mayor and I have been looking at very diligently and I think we're getting close to something of that nature arising again for a revenue source. And also, last thing I can add is all the leases, we redid this spring and we added a 2% increase clause to all of the leases. I have upwards of 50 leases at the airport.
Any questions for Todd?
Todd, first part you said you needed help for, what was it called?
The ARCAM system.
I think you had one before that. Something to do with fire response?
Yeah, ARF.
Yeah, okay. So, in other words, if you don't supply the extra help for that, it'd probably fall on Doug's shoulders with the fire department?
Yeah.
Good.
And I would add that the fire department and the airport have been working extremely close together, you know?
Yeah, we've had a great working relationship. It's been a lot better than it has been in past years.
I'm not going, I'm not going there, you guys. I'm staying out, I'm staying out of this one. Are there any other questions for Todd on this, one additional staff? Hearing none, I will look for...
Just the housekeeping, will this require a budget amendment then or, I mean, is that a part of it as well or?
At this time, no. Because I work on a flexible budget because he's an enterprise fund, we wouldn't have to. We will need to, like I mentioned in there, that $22,000 that would be needed whether we did nothing or added staff, that'll have to be addressed because that's outside of the 2017 budget number, so...
So, Todd, this'll take care of the overtime then? You don't think you'll need overtime?
That is incorrect. We will still need overtime.
Yeah, there are probably some.
The thing, to add, to fully staff the airport, we'd need to go to 24-hour-a-day, 7-day coverage and that actually takes four full-time staff members to do that, two on days, two on nights, and they rotate two on, three off, three on, two off. And we'd be fully staffed at that point. But right now, we're just asking for one, so...
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Number 14, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Prairie Lakes Healthcare for temporary ambulance transport services to the airport. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Don? Yep, by Don. And Chief, you're up on this. I know that Todd did touch just a little bit on this for you, but you fill us in what's going on.
So, Prairie Lakes is going under renovation for roughly about 20 months and it will take down the helipad that's right outside of the hospital right now. So, we will have to use the airport facility for that helipad and we'll be transporting the flight teams back and forth from the airport with the patients, very similar to what we do for a current fixed wing. And so, we do that service to the hospital for also the helicopters for somewhere that's up to 20 months. And so, what we did is we came up with a contract that would supply that service to the hospital for a flat-rate fee, that we provide that service as long as they need it by the contract standards, roughly looking at anywhere from 10 to 20 flights a month on average. So, that's what this contract basically covers.
What percentage of the ones, I mean, maybe you don't know because the other ones are helipad and land right there, but how many are you doing fixed wing now?
That's a good question. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
You'll probably see more fixed wing than helicopter after that takes place anyhow, so...
You know, that's, from my understanding, that's kind of determined by the hospital that is supplying the flight team. Depends on the illness, the reason for transport, whether they're bringing a helicopter or a fixed wing and depends on how busy they are and how far they have to travel.
Doug, a couple of questions. It's probably clear, I just want to make sure I understand it. This is between us and Prairie Lakes. In other words, we're not getting involved in any kind of insurance or Medicare or anything, issues of that nature for whatever services we're providing. This is strictly between us and the hospital?
Yes, that's correct. Normally, it's a patient fee between us and the patient and with the helicopter pad... out, Prairie Lakes has taken on this contract.
And then also, the rate, I'm guessing, is comparable to what we would charge for a normal service of that nature?
Yeah, it lands somewhere between Medicare rates and a full-service rate, and we included the three miles to the airport for a load of miles and everything, kind of come up with an average figure that would work for both sides.
Chief, one question. Infrastructure-wise, do we have to invest any money in infrastructure on this?
No. Other than, other than we would have some additional time, we'd have some overtime and things like that, and some additional, you know, things like that, so.
I think in the very initial, I think, Todd, you're going to be putting some things together at the airport, so they know where the landing pad's going to be, and to get things squared away on that, if I'm not mistaken. But once that's done, it's done, and then we should be taken care of.
I think a lot of that's pretty close to in place, and they're basically ready to start the service, so.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, they're having a groundbreaking here shortly, are they not?
Yeah, I think today, they closed the helipad.
Perfect. Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Number 15, authorization for the mayor to sign a long-term lease agreement with Glacier Lakes Energy regarding municipal property adjacent to the GLE property for purposes of a rail loop track. At this time, I will look for a motion and a second for discussion, and then we'll turn it over to Justin. Motion by Bruce, second by Glenn. Justin, if you want to take that.
Certainly, Mayor. GLE, and we have Paul here, Paul Cawkins from GLE, who might be able to answer any of your more substantive questions. But in terms of the lease document here, GLE came to the city in regards to its rail loop expansion project, and asked for a certain swath of territory, or of municipal property, and asked initially if they could obtain an easement from the city, where the city would give over access to that land in an easement form to GLE. In looking at the relevant statutes, we came to find that the city's ability to give over land is relatively limited directly to private parties. And easements, as far as we could see, were not envisioned, as in a city being able to give an easement over to a purely private entity. So instead, we hit on the idea of a long-term lease, this being a 99-year lease, because statute clearly provides authority for a municipality to enter into leases with private entities. So that gives you the legal background on why this is a long-term lease, a 99-year lease, and not an easement. The reason for the long duration is the nature of the investment that GLE is making in this property. As rail, a rail loop, it's a very capital-intensive investment, a long-term investment. And so that is where this lease agreement stands. Again, a term of 99 years, nominal consideration, a dollar per year, and indemnification protecting the city. So I think the description of what we're talking about in terms of property, we have it there on Exhibit A in the document language. But what we're essentially talking about on the map here is that strip that Shane is denoting with the hand pointer. So we're talking a relatively small portion of property. But again, Paul might be able to provide you greater information on why that parcel is particularly important to their operation.
I do have a quick question for you, because I know that there's a lot of kids that will go down on that side and go fishing. This isn't going to stop them from going over there, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. The ability to utilize that property, if you look at, you know, there still is a good deal of distance on that Exhibit A between the channel and this property. If you actually go out there to take a look at where the stakes are in that GLE put in, you'll see that there's, what would you say, Paul, in terms of distance between the stakes?
About 60 feet.
60 feet.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Justin on this? Hearing none? I'll move forward here. Hearing none, then I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, authorization for the mayor to sign an easement agreement with Glacier Lakes Energy regarding municipal property adjacent to the GLE property. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion, and we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Randy, second by Beth. Shane?
Okay, thank you. This is very closely related to the previous action you just took. And essentially, the city, prior to GLE owning the property that the rail loop project is on, of course, was the Hampton Farm. And the city had a lease with the Hampton Farm prior to GLE's purchase of the land, and it was to access this little building here, which regulates the water outflow from Pelican Lake. So what the easement did was it accessed South Broadway Street through a gate right here next to the river. It followed this berm that was constructed alongside the river and would end at the location of where the city's property commences then. So what we've done is, the previous easement was only on the dike itself, and because this is an improved stretch of river, in other words, it is all riprap-banked stretch of the river, and we have multiple stormwater outfalls along the north side of the river here from Highway 212 into the river. So we included the entire area from the top of this berm over to the Highway 212 right away and the adjoining property boundaries over here, so that we could go in, repair riprap, we could take debris out of the river, et cetera. So we've really kind of enhanced this easement beyond what we originally had, and we think from an operation and maintenance standpoint, it's going to be a win-win for us and GLE.
Can you explain to me, and maybe I'm confused here, why is one, we couldn't have an easement?
Sure.
And on the other one, we can't?
Mayor, I was tempted to jump in right after Shane got done, but I'm glad you answered that, or asked that question. So what I was talking about is the city providing an easement to a private entity. In this circumstance, we're talking about a private entity providing an easement to the city, which the city is fully within its rights to accept.
Okay, and that makes sense. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. While we're out there at GLE, can you tell me how the bridge is coming along?
Well, the, I didn't get out there today. What I understand is that the T columns or sections will be delivered first part of this week, and they'll start using the crane to put those in place. And then, once those are set, they can put the rails on the sides and pave the pavement surface over the top. So should be fairly, it should be done by the end of the month, is what they're expecting, so.
Yeah, it's interesting. You go down First Avenue here on the north side and look down Broadway, you see those cranes out there working away, so, very good. Any old business we need to discuss? Hearing none, is there any new business that we need to discuss? Are there any liaison member reports that we need to hear? There is a need to go into executive session. I will look for a motion and a second to go in for personnel reasons at this time, so I'll look for that motion in a second. Motion by Beth, second by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in executive session. I don't expect anything to come out of this, so the news, I wouldn't think you'll need to stick around. Thank you.